The February twenty first meeting, February twenty first, twenty twenty three meeting of the Cognitive District Board of Directors is called ORDER. I understand there's someone that would like to help us with the pledge today. Is there a Jackson Sammle that's here somewhere? Jackson, come on up and the flag is right there, so if you can lead us in the flag, that's great. Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Will the secretary please call a roll?
Director Hontra?
Here.
Director Simpson? Here. Director Lutzke? Here. Director Goldlana? Here. Director Puscher?
She's not able to be here tonight?
Director Frank?
Yeah.
Director O'Brien? Here. Director Apple? Here. Director Schreiber?
Here. There's a moment at the beginning of each meeting where we allow and invite the public to ask any questions about items that are on our agenda. Does anybody in the audience have any questions about agenda items today? If not, we'll move on. Under our minutes from previous meetings, I'll entertain a motion to approve item two dot one, the minutes from the February twenty, February seventh, twenty twenty three voting meeting, and then number two dot two, minutes out of the February seventh committee meeting. Any questions or discussions, or actually, first, I have a motion for that item.
So, second.
Moved in second. Thank you. Any questions or discussions about that item? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Um, I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel matters, confidential student matters, and general information items. I'll now turn to Dr. Crater for a superintendent report.
Thank you, Director Schreiber. With the superintendent's report, we did have our guest speaker that we were honored to have due to the pledge of allegiance. We thank Jackson for coming in tonight. We also have Mrs. Mazalko to share a little bit of information about Jackson and his recent, recent happenings at Carnegie. I don't want to spill anything too much, but I'm going to let you finish it.
Certainly. At Carnegie Elementary, we are rolling out a new initiative called Carnegie Changemakers. And in this initiative, we aim to illuminate and amplify staff as well as scholars for their acts of, that relate to the attendance of the Carlington School District as far as community excellence and character. And we, we recognize that individuals who demonstrate these characteristics are doing their part in making our world a better place. We want to promote being the change that you want to see in the world around us, and it starts with even the smallest of citizens. So certainly, Jackson did that, and I will turn it over to Mr. Alexander to express what he appreciated in Jackson's behavior and characteristics to speak to this.
Yeah, thank you for having me, and I'm honored to be able to speak on behalf of what Jackson has done. Jackson is just one of many students in my room, obviously, who has been learning about the importance of empathy and compassion, and how we use those things to welcome people into our school district and into our neighborhood. And we were fortunate enough to have, you know, we have this big, beautiful community in Carnegie of people coming from all over the world. And just a few weeks ago, we had a new young gentleman come from Ukraine, who does not speak English, and obviously, you know, it's an overwhelming experience for him, and we're trying our best to make him feel comfortable. And when we talked about, you know, what empathy is, you know, most kids can understand it on some level and repeat it, but Jackson put that empathy into action by welcoming a little boy with open arms day one, and literally took him under his wing. So it was, you know, when he, when he left to go to the cafeteria, Jackson was there with his arm around him, leading him there.
That's great.
When he left at the end of the day to go out to meet his parents, Jackson had his arm around him and led him out to see his parents at the end of the day. And I could tell by the little boy smiled, that it meant everything to him, to have that one person who cared. So, bravo to Jackson.
Jackson, we have a changemaker certificate for you. Would you like to come up and receive this?
Right, Mrs. Mazalko.
And this is your Carnegie changemaker award, and it's because of your exemplary acts in kindness and peer mentorship. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
So, Jackson, as superintendent, I appreciate everything that you do. You exemplify what we see as a Carlington Cougar. You make us proud with your actions and the way you approach your learning each and every day. I know you brought some special guests with you. Would you mind introducing who, who you drove here today?
Jackson's mom, Rachel. I'm sorry. Good. And his sister, Allison, and his brother, Mason.
Jackson, why don't you come up and shake all of our hands? We'd like to congratulate you.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Congrats, Jackson.
Thank you.
And, Jackson, I spoke with Dimitro's parents. They're so thankful. Thank you, thank you, thank you. In Ukrainian, "Ya!"
So, at Carnegie Elementary School, we do have a rather large population of ELL students, and a lot of times in education, we use a lot of three-letter kind of words. ELL is English Language Learners, who are enrolled in the ESL program, which is English as a Second Language Program. We currently have sixty-six students at Carnegie Elementary. We have twelve students who are going through the evaluation process to be enrolled into the program. So the program is growing. We reach out, the students that come to us from different parts of the world add a lot of value to Carnegie and to the community and Carlington at large. So we're very pleased to have them in our school district. So we're expanding to the point where we are reaching out to the intermediate unit to provide us with an additional instructor on a halftime position. We were able to carve out a space. Carnegie has a very tight area, doesn't have a lot of extra rooms there, but we were able to carve out a space. Mrs. Mazalko worked very closely with Dr. Manich and also with Mr. Peter to find that space and to get it ready for, for our students as we expand. So it's students like, like Jackson, and there's many other students at Carnegie and our other buildings as well, who open their arms to, to our visitors and to our friends and make them feel welcome here at Carlington. So that's a piece of the expansion program of, of the ESL program at Carnegie. At the junior, senior high school, we are moving into the scheduling season. Dr. Manich is here this evening to share with the board and the public a little bit about our, our program of studies. Students will be provided with some information about the scheduling process. On February twenty seventh, counselors will reach out to their students and have some meetings just to explain what's in the program of studies, a little bit about the scheduling process. Beginning March twentieth, the high school will shoot information out to parents with some timelines, and then beginning March twenty seventh, students will start the scheduling for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year online to get things rolling. So Dr. Manich, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, first of all, I don't know how I'm going to fall back.
Thank you, Jackson.
Just sit that down, Dr. Manich.
I might have to come back after that one. There's no way I can, I can even come close to talking. Anyway, thanks for having me today. I'm, I'm here to talk a bit, a little bit about the program of studies. And for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're going to be adding a few new courses to the program of studies coming up, and I wanted to highlight those for you as well as, as the public. In our science department, they're going to be introducing an elective course this coming year called Science in the News. It's going to be open to eleventh and twelfth graders. And in this particular score, in this particular course, students will be studying current science events around the nation and the world as they happen in real time. Multimedia will be used on a regular basis. They'll be using newspapers, social media, magazines, journal articles, and documentaries, and these will be used as basis for the course, and this will allow students to investigate and experience learning about topics that occur throughout the world. Similarly, in the social studies department, they're going to introduce a course that's called Current World Affairs. It is also going to be a one semester course. It will be open this time to tenth to twelfth graders. And in Current World Affairs, it's going to be an investigation and discussion of current national and international issues. Students will identify topics of discussion, interpret the causes of the conflicts, evaluate techniques to resolve these conflicts. Students will examine characteristics of being a responsible citizen, and a large component of this particular course, and the grade will be based on class participation and contributions to the class discussion. Other courses that we'll be adding to the course selection book are going to be mostly in our peer-to-peer section of our, our book, where students will be paired with our students who are, have a little bit of severe mental disabilities. We're going to add for these students what we call peer-to-peer digital technology skills. We're going to introduce them to a little bit of technology. It's designed for the students, again, to want to work with the, with the, in the peer-to-peer program. Then we see elective credit for the course. Students will be responsible for working with their peers on concepts of online privacy, security, digital footprints, online relationships, and safe communications. Students will follow a few guidelines, will follow the current guidelines for inclusion in the classroom, following IDPA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Act. We're also going to change one course, which we used to call Peer-to-Peer Meteorology. We're now going to introduce Peer-to-Peer Science One, or Peer-to-Peer Science Two. Peer-to-Peer Science One, we're going to align to the Grade Eight Science Alternative Eligible Content of the PASA. And the Peer-to-Peer Science Two, we have aligned to the Grade Eleven Science Alternative Eligible Content, also for the PASA. Again, it will be for students who want to work with our, with our students on these science concepts. Students will assist their peers. We have variabilities and challenges in these areas, and the curriculum or placement will be based on the IED team decision, since it's in a one-to-one ratio for peers to peers. So those are the kind of new things we're going to be putting in. We're kind of revamping how we deal with the peer-to-peer mentors from this point forward. Normally, a student would sign up for, let's say, Peer-to-Peer Phys Ed, or they'd sign up for Peer-to-Peer, what used to be Meteorology, or they used to sign up for, for the different peer-to-peer classes. And what we found out is that if a student, let's say, signed up for Peer-to-Peer Phys Ed, and it didn't fit in their schedule, they didn't get to become a peer-to-peer mentor for our students. So what we're going to do is, we're going to try very hard during the scheduling process to give them their choices, but we're going to open up as a bank of peer-to-peer mentors and say, okay, so, you know, you're going to sign up to be a peer-to-peer mentor, and although we're going to try to fit you into the course you want, if not, we're going to fit you into a course that's going to fit into your schedule. So they still have that opportunity to be a mentor for our particular students. So that's kind of one of the changes we're going to make in how we're going to schedule students into our, our peer-to-peer programs. Couple things that are going to be in there. We did some name change. We did change curriculum. They just wanted to change the name of the courses. Child Development One is now going to be called Parenting and Infant Development, and Child Development Two is now going to be called Early Childhood Development. And finally, we've opened up all of our business courses to include all students in grades nine to twelve. So there's not going to be any other limit at that point. In doing so, we're going to allow us to schedule more students in these elective classes. This will provide more educational opportunities for our students as we fill our nine period a day at the junior, senior high school, and hopefully, we will not have to close out any courses in our program of studies due to low enrollment or scheduling conflicts, and offer more than one section of maybe the more popular courses to be put in our academic programs. So those are kind of the changes we had from one year to the next. So that's kind of what I have for tonight. So if there's any questions, I know you had an opportunity to review the book, the booklet that we gave you, so.
Dr. Manich? How, talk a bit about peer-to-peer classes and how you're restructuring at least the science part of it. Do we have a lot of students participating in that?
We do, and again, it's going to depend upon the students who qualify and, and their IEDs. So in, in the Life Skills Program, we could have, you know, students in like the seventh and eighth grade, the same, we might have five, you know? They might be sitting in that, that Peer-to-Peer Science One, you know, so we'll need, you know, five peer-to-peer mentors to sit with them. And in redesigning it, they, like I said, it used to take Meteorology, but now we're more pinpointing it to allow them to learn the academic eligible content standards that they're going to take in the, in the PASA. Because they've taken a grade science PASA and eleventh grade science PASA. So we're kind of moving it towards their preparation to be successful in this particular, you know, scenario.
Thanks, Dr. Manich. Any questions?
I have a quick one, Ed.
Yes.
I'd like the fact that we're constantly looking at our curriculum, and every couple of years, we introduce new classes that we think the kids might enjoy. I think that's a great approach. Do we ever survey students after, like, the end of the first or the second year when we have a new class? Do we ever survey them to get their, their level of engagement or how they liked the class? I mean, we can see the numbers, so we can kind of see.
Yeah, that's kind of, we really did a book formal survey together, to kind of, how does it go from one year to the next? Just for an example, we introduced Yearbook not too long ago, and from what we're hearing now, Yearbook is flourishing, you know, very much so. You know, that we have, we have a lot of students, we started maybe with five or six. I think they're up in the, in the teens, almost twenties.
Good.
You know? So the nice thing about us having a nine period day, I know it's tougher, Yearbook, because, you know, you have one Yearbook, but as, as the popularity of different courses grow, and I think another one we, we introduced not too long ago was World War History. You know, I think we might have enough popularity right now that we might have to put two sections of it in to schedule, because, you know, with a nine period day and the number of periods we can teach now, that, you know, we shouldn't be able to limit it to, let's say, you know, kids, we get thirty kids, we can have two sections of fifteen, and they can fit their realized. We don't like to turn students away if we don't have to. You know, and say, well, it's closed because we have one section and we have too many kids. You know, or, the same token on the other side, we keep writing more offerings. We keep bringing more educational opportunity for our students here, and again, we don't want to turn them away, so even with the, with the nine period schedule, you know, maybe we should close courses that we might not have enough students for. Maybe we should just let it run, you know, because that's how you're going to gain popularity for, for the kids to say, you know what, I took that course last year, it might not have been six of us, but, you know, we really enjoyed it. Word of mouth is, is a really big thing sometimes, you know, for the kids that really enjoy these classes. So, you know, that's kind of, kind of how we gauge it from one year to the next.
Any questions?
If that's all. Thanks. Thank you very much. Well, that leads a little bit into what I plan to share as a part of the superintendent's report, as well as the climate survey. This year, the district is issuing a, a climate survey to students, parents, and also staff to collect valuable information on the climate of the school. When we talk about school climate surveys, what we're referring to there is it's measuring the level of student support that children receive in the classroom, how they interact with staff members, how they interact with their peers. So the term climate is, is used broadly there to capture a lot of data in relationship to how students are able to approach their day, how they feel. And within that survey, one of the questions that we do ask is, we ask a little bit about homework, we ask about course engagement, specifically, does the course offerings at the junior, senior high school, are they interesting and intriguing to students? Do they add value? Are they aligned to their career goals? So our students recently went through and completed the climate survey in their classrooms this week and last week. The elementary's did it, the secondary also did it. So we're in the process of making sure that we get as much data that we can from our students to use that as a measuring tool. And what I plan to do is to, to follow up with, with our students, based on the data, is work within small groups of, of focus groups of students to dig down a little bit deeper into the data that's gleaned, to pick away at however the, the data falls and, and what we glean from that, to get a little bit more understanding. So if we would, for example, if we get a response that says, no, I don't think the courses are very interesting, meeting with kids to, to find out, what types of courses would you find to be more interesting, and how could we restructure things? Same thing with staff. We have a staff survey that's out there, is being able to meet with focus groups of, of staff. A lot of the questions that we ask there are related to, do you feel adequately prepared? Do you have the tools and the equipment to do your job properly? Are you supported by your, your supervisors? So based on that information that we get back, I'll be able to meet with smaller groups of teachers to kind of find out more information that you can't necessarily get from strongly agree, strongly disagree, agree, and strongly agree types of, of surveys. So as we get that information and go through and triangulate it, I think it'll give us a lot more data to work off of, to make, have an impact, not just on curriculum, but just basically the, the overall climate culture of each of our three buildings. So we will send out one more final e-blast tomorrow, just to remind parents to engage in the survey. The data is extremely important to us. The district has not conducted a, a climate survey in some years, so getting fresh set of data will be very valuable to us to, to move things forward. As far as school safety, I had two points on, on school safety. All of our buildings are equipped with a variety of safety equipment that are designed to, in some cases, lifesaving events like AEDs. We also have stop the bleed kits in our buildings. And this past Monday, at the boys' basketball game, varsity basketball game, was held right here at the junior, senior high school, we had an individual that experienced a, a health issue and dropped to the floor. We had a, a quick response from our athletic director, who helped secure the AED. We have two AEDs in this building, one located on the, on the first floor, one located on the second floor. To get that device secured, by the time that he came back in the gymnasium, we had three individuals who were, who were fans there that evening, who quickly tended to that individual's needs. He was on, on the floor, and they were able to, each of those three individuals had background in, in health careers as nurses. So they were able to quickly go through and, and respond to that. When the AED device got there, they were able to use it. And that's part of our checks to go through, is to make sure that we do regular inspections of our devices to make sure that they are working. So that AED was, was working, and it was used as, as a lifesaving tool for, for that individual. So a very special thank you goes out to three individuals. Lauren Pelzak, she's a Carlington mother, Amy Stoker, who is a Steel Valley mother, and Katie Hiddleston, also from Steel Valley, all with a career background in, in, in the health field. And I know individuals in that health field, they don't get into the, into that position for public recognition, they get into that field because they're interested in, in helping people. So we're very thankful for them for being very quick responders. From what we understand, the individual was released from the hospital, he is recovering, he is at home, and I believe that the, the family plans to come up here tomorrow night to have a little bit of a reunion with the, the individuals who administered the, the shocks to him. So again, Amy, Katie, and Lauren greatly appreciate them being here at, at Carlington to, to help and assist. Also, along those lines, Mr. Jones, who is our technology supervisor, is also an EMS worker. He has recently taken on the, the duty of providing, offering training right now to all staff members who want training and certifications in CPR and also to, to use the AED. So they will get, anybody who's interested will get the, the AED. The district will cover the fee of, it's about thirty-five or forty-five, thirty-five or forty dollars to get the certification. If that program is successful, we, we also look to, to branch out to the community. If community members want to come to the school to get training, there will be a fee of, of thirty-five dollars to get that, but it's just going through the, the training. And you never know when, when an event like that is, is going to happen, when you have the equipment available to you, to be that first responder, to help have a significant impact, not just on the life of that individual, but their loved ones as, as well. So Mr. Jones has started some training. One of the elementary's looks to continue that at, at the other elementary, and then also up here at the high school as well. Also, in regard to safety on tonight's agenda, we have the acceptance of the Women for a Healthy Environment Grant. This grant provides the district with fifteen thousand dollars in, in funding to provide radon testing at each of our three buildings. So the bulk of the fifteen thousand dollars will be used to purchase the radon collecting devices. So each of those, when you set those up on the first floor, you have to put a device in, in each classroom. That's where we inform the staff to stay away from the device, not to tamper with it, to make sure that it stays in there for a few days to collect as much data as possible. And then Mr. Peter will send those devices back in, just to get the monitor of the readings, and then if there are any, any safety issues in regard to, to radon in our buildings, we'll make sure that we address those quickly. So it's just another, another example of, of taking safety precautions and looking out for the general well-being of both our staff and students and our community members who have access to our buildings. So we'll look forward to having that, that grant processed and looking forward to, to moving forward there. So that is what I have for superintendent's report tonight. Any questions about the report?
Not about the report, I want to go back. I like what you said, Jim, about different the curriculum with, like, surveying. I kind of like an idea of, is there any, do we formal survey? I just think that's good, because you can get feedback about the class, about the teacher, what they did. Because like in college, you know, you usually do that.
Right.
Is that something you could look into doing? I don't know if that's a lot of work to go and do it, but I kind of like that idea, whether it's a new class or just all the classes, or I don't know if it has to be at the end of every nine weeks or semester of every year, but I kind of like that idea of doing a formal survey for classes.
I think we can. It's just a matter of developing the, the tool to collect the information, and just a way of, of structuring the questions to get the feedback.
Sure.
Yeah. And I, I do, I think that was a good feedback, good suggestion, because really, it's the students that we're, that we're serving. We want to make sure that we are offering coursework that is aligned to, to their career choices that they want to get into. As, as we all know, in the workforce right now, a lot of vacancies across the United States in, in some certain areas. Some of the things recently are just cybersecurity. There's over a million jobs nationwide related to cybersecurity. Cybersecurity has like ninety different strands that, that kids can get into, and there's some certification programs that quite honestly does not take a, a big heavy lift from, from districts to offer those things. For cybersecurity, it's a sequence of three courses that we're going to start to investigate. Sophomore year, junior year, senior year, students can graduate from high school, have several certifications in the area of cybersecurity, and can get out into the workforce right after high school, making salaries of, in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars. Students can also then take that, go into engineering or different types of fields to increase their, their earning potentials as well. So I think those are things that, as a district, we definitely need to start taking a look at, is that, that high school experience, and then priming students at our elementary level, especially in the area of, of technology, working more with, with coding. Coding is a, is a skill that's not just used for the typical computer type of person, but it's also used in many different fields. When you work with spreadsheets, it's being able to design code, it's accessible in, in the business world as well. So getting more access to our students to different forms of, of technology. There's a lot of other careers out there that I think we need to start to really take a look at, to align our coursework at the junior, senior high school for, for students. So it can be a good first step with taking a survey of, of how that aligns.
I agree. I think in terms of surveying, too, if, if the students feel like they have some say-so in the program, and then maybe they're, you know, they feel more engaged, I think it's, you know, that, that's what makes people want to be part of the program.
Right.
So, yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Especially like new classes.
Right. And I think we do have the opportunity with, with climate survey, one of the questions in the climate survey is coursework at the junior, senior high school, aligns with my career goals. And take a look at that data. It's talking to kids, what are your career plans after high school? What type of coursework would be more engaging, more relevant to you? I think that the two new courses that are, that are coming out in both social studies and science, I think, are, are very good examples of courses that can be very engaging, relevant, and authentic to, to our students. of courses that can be very engaging, relevant and authentic to our students. Just by investigating current types of events, the students, I think, will have the autonomy to bring up different types of current events that they want to talk about in the classroom and investigate. Also increases the reading skills, the writing skills as well and.
And so many don't know what their career aspirations are, but they do know what keeps them engaged and excited about learning.
Right. And especially we recognize that many of the careers that are, will be out there in ten years don't even exist today. Artificial intelligence is changing the world at incredible speeds. Chat GPT or whatever it's called is going to be pretty much ancient history in June when Microsoft and Google get together with their AI type of software as well. So many of the jobs in the future, fifty percent of the manual types of tasks that we currently do within the next twelve to twenty-four months are going to be replaced with artificial intelligence or at least have the ability to be replaced by artificial intelligence. The parts with, with coding, you know, we're having pizza shops that are being transitioned over into robotics and being able to code those machines to flip a pie, to put sauce on it. There's still some human interaction to make that pie, but you have robots that can take those, put them in the oven, bake them and push them out. So it's a changing world. It's evolving. We definitely have to have educational force. We need to make sure that we're preparing our kids for the future.
John, as far as the student surveys, are they answered anonymously?
Yes. Yeah. So the raw data comes back, we're able to see, we can dig down into it a little bit. We can take a look at Crafton Elementary School, third grade students, racial background and so on. So there's some questions that, that when you look at, you'll get an answer, you know, students at this school are bullied or there are racial conflicts in this building. And in many cases, you may get responses back that, no, eighty percent of the students say, no, there's no conflict. People don't harass individuals based on their sexuality or anything else. And you think eighty percent is a pretty good number, but then when you drill down into it, you take a look at who were the twenty percent that answered that and you take a look, well, it could be a certain population of your students that, that population of students, that's your twenty percent of your students who feel isolated from, from instruction, from isolated from, from other students in the district. So those are areas you want to take a look at. So even if it's ten percent, if that ten percent is one group of students, there's a problem. The other ninety percent don't see it as a problem, but they're not coming from that demographic. So it'd be an issue that we would want to take a look at a little bit deeper.
How do you call out the answers where students, where students could be vindictive toward our teachers?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Say for instance, if a student wants to be vindictive toward a teacher, how do you call that out?
They could, but if it's just one student, then it's not going to show up in.
It's not significant.
Right. Law of numbers. So our big push, what we're trying to do is get all of our students, at least ninety percent of our students to take the survey so that you get the, a large sampling size. And there's questions in there that are designed to be, kids should know the answer, just about a hundred percent of them should answer it this way. For example, do, I have access to my grades online. Definitely should see at the high school level, ninety to ninety-five percent of those kids would be saying yes. Those types of things. So you get a tendency to see whether or not kids are just going through and just taking the survey randomly. There's questions that are duplicated in there with slightly different wording, but they're asking the same thing. So you can take a look at how one student answered this question, how they answered that question. They should be relatively similar to each other. If there's a wider deviation in responses, then that starts to, to give you an indication that the survey may not be as valid. So certainly you got to take those things into consideration. Are some students who like to just color the dots in or they like to give perceptions that don't truly exist? So with law of numbers, we should get a pretty, thank you, pretty good sampling. And then I think with the triangulation of the data, it's really going in, talking to students to follow up on it, I think really helps as well.
I like the additional feedback on the, on the questions. With enough board interest in having some kind of survey, I, I agree. And I think you can get, I think we will get great data from the climate survey because it's the first time we've done it in a number of years and we're asking some good questions and we'll get good feedback. But specific to a class, especially with a new class, I think we can get some very specific data about that class. It could be five or six questions. It doesn't have to be lengthy, but is there a way we could look at doing a test scenario at the end of this year for one of the new classes that we have? And it'll be a learning experience for us and maybe we'll learn some from the data, but is that something that we can stretch ourselves to and do this year for one of our new classes?
Yeah, I think pretty easily. I think you're right. Four or five question type of survey about the course, the curriculum, those kinds of things to gather interest or gather that data back. I think we could, we could do, we had.
We can grab a couple of courses we put in new this year.
Yeah.
And see how they, they see how.
Yeah. I'd say really the, this year and the year before, we threw in some, some other pretty interesting classes too.
Great. And to your point, I think you said earlier, I think creating those questions or crafting those questions is a key aspect of what you're going to get. So putting a lot of thought, having the team put a lot of thought into how you ask a question, what you ask. And I think Chris Propp, a great point, like we can ask an academic question of a student and in some cases they'll answer it the way we expect. In other cases, they're thinking about their class in a very different way than we as adults might be. So trying to put ourselves in the shoes of the kids and trying to anticipate how they're viewing it would be helpful if something, I agree. Any other comments or thoughts on that? Thanks. Okay. Moving on to committee reports. Where are our committee reports? So Director Apple, anything you do to report on Parkway West or anything interesting you want to share?
Oh, sure. We had a meeting on February the seventh and talked to a few, talked about a few things. But one, one thing that, just to kind of follow on about, we talked about in terms of crew randomness and things like that. I think that Parkway is definitely our, you know, way of preparing students for, for specific careers. Especially when, you know, Dr. Carter had mentioned cybersecurity. They offer that at Parkway. And like a lot of Parkway programs, successful completion, the students end up with a career certification, an industry certification, so they can get straight to work. I think that it's interesting, you talk about this and to me it's like, well, if you could do something like that in say seventh and eighth grade and a student shows some aptitude and interest in that, that would be a great way to move them into, just using that example, the cybersecurity network technology program at Parkway. There's, there's a number of different ones, you know, programs. But anyway, so a few things that we talked about on the seventh. The start date for students next year is August the twenty-second, which is the same start date for Carleton. So they are also looking to get a CHL program out there, hopefully next school year. They did talk, they, the folks out there asked me how, how we liked it here at Carleton and I was happy to report that. It's been a really big positive for our students. So PPG gave Parkway West a hundred thousand dollar grant. And it's going to come through the foundation out there. So what it's going to pay for is in the auto body program, they're going to modernize some equipment, including a up-to-date mixing booth for paint and ventilation, which is going to be up-to-date. And so some safety things there and some modifications to the welding booths to make them better. And finally, I think I mentioned a while ago, we're looking to expand the masonry bricklaying program. And as such, the, the union has offered to construct at their cost a building for Parkway, which Parkway will own. And, you know, it's going to be a great facility for, for kids and it benefits the, the masons because, you know, they're able to then have a pipeline of new people coming into that, that career. It's looking like that program is going to, we had it at one time. It's not current. It's going to restart in the fall of twenty-four. And today, just before I left my home to come up here, got an email from Dr. Copeland, the director at Parkway West and his architectural drawings of what the building is going to look like and where it's going to be situated. It's going to be a really great facility. And I think that going to twelve for, for kids who might have an interest in that sort of thing, it's a, it's a good career path. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Good stuff. Director Hunschar, Pathfinder, anything you want to share about Pathfinder?
Thanks Jim. We had our Pathfinder meeting last week on the fifteenth. We have eighty-nine students. We actually had eighty-nine, one left the area, then we got another, so we have eighty-nine. We've had a real problem with our heating and air conditioning system because it's an old system and we're going to have to spend six figures to fix the situation. Carleton has been assessed eight thousand dollars since we're seven percent of the students of the consortium is eight thousand dollars of a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. We've had inspections of the fire alarm system, which has to be done every year, the elevators every three years. Our head of maintenance, Rob Losstetter, he's an excellent man. He just loves that school so much that even after he retired, he accepted to be, to do consulting for a monthly fee. And we're so happy that he's going to renew through 2024. Our financial audit is a month late, but we have the highest rating. And if anybody's interested in the Pathfinder Express, it's our newsletter of what goes on at Pathfinder. Thank you, Jim.
Director Zalovsky, any updates on Shaz?
I don't have anything right now. I should be getting something soon though because the conference last year was late April.
They're probably planning that right now.
Yes, yes. So they're taking a look at the, at the conference. They actually pushed out information to each of the high schools to start gather of names of students to be recognized. I believe still looking for keynote speaker. And then also Shaz is taking a look at their yearly board professional development type of activity, which I think they're going to be planning in the next couple of weeks too.
All right. Thanks. Legislative PSBA and Foundation, Dirkerson?
Hey, I'll start with Foundation. I didn't go last time because I was here, as was Wendy. I did take a look at the minutes. It looked like what they did is just their annual reorganization meeting. I saw that there was some talk of Taste of Carleton coming back.
Yeah, that's May first.
Okay.
Yeah, but ten others.
This year, next year.
This year, yeah.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, May first and we're back and we're at the country club again. I think we're up to, I think we had seven committed vendors at the meeting and we're working on getting a couple more, so.
So Kelly, what's the date?
It's May first.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's a Monday night. It's usually a Monday because the country club.
It's usually a awesome event.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a really great event. And you just get to see so many, I mean, parents are there, teachers are there, board members, administrators, you know, it just is a really great night.
Community comes out.
Yeah. And, and the food is always.
So it's really exciting to have a day.
Very exciting.
I don't know if there's anything else I'm missing from that. I just, you know.
I don't think, I think we're definitely doing the golf outing again. I want to say that she's looking at the dates, but I don't think we have a date set.
Yeah, so we have time.
Yeah. And the Maggie Scholarship.
Put the word out about, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the Maggie Scholarship. We'll come out, we'll go live usually, I think it's March first, they wanted to go live. I've been advertising it in my classroom to all of my seniors.
I think, I think they were trying to encourage more students who are going to trade.
Yes.
School to.
Yes.
Apply the Maggie Scholarship. So, okay, so that's Foundation. And I'm so grateful that you brought up all the details. As far as Legislative PSBA, I, I took the liberty of just highlighting some things from the recent State of Education Report that I wanted to share out to the public. I know board members get a copy of this and, you know, a lot of people at this table have seen it, maybe read it. But there are some, you know, interesting things in here that, you know, the general public might not hear or, or know of. So Annual State of Education Report has served as a barometer of not only key indicators of public school performance such as standardized testing and finances, but also challenges that public schools are facing. So this is the 2023 State of Education Report and it's reporting on 2021 and 2022. So in, in who they, they surveyed, the school administrators and also Pennsylvania Department of Education, National Center for Education Statistics, Pennsylvania parents and with children K through twelve. So that's who they were talking to to get answering, you know, answers to their survey questions. The key findings from this year report biggest challenges. Nearly, nearly three quarters or seventy-one percent of school districts reported student mental health needs and staffing shortages, constraints as their biggest challenges. Ninety-two percent of school districts reported experiencing a shortage of substitute teachers. While significant, significant percentage of districts also reported shortages in instructional aides, drivers, special education staff. Budget pressure, mandatory charter school tuition payments were the top source of budget pressure for the fourth year in a row. Mental health, more than three quarters or seventy-seven percent of parents with school-aged children raided their school as having done a good job addressing the emotional health and well-being of students. So I think, you know, we've talked about the CHL program here and that's something that we, you know, take very seriously and, you know, taken, you know, steps to address that. Pennsylvania ranks seventh in public school enrollments. So more than one point seven children enrolled in Pennsylvania public schools were in the 2021 school year. And that represents three point five percent of the forty-nine point three million children enrolled in the public schools in the United States. Only six states have higher public school enrollment. Pandemic impacts on enrollment. It did, pandemic did have a negative impact on enrollment across nearly all segments of education, both private and public. As it lingered into the second school year, enrollment levels did not revert to pre-pandemic levels, but did show signs of beginning to do so. So hopefully we're coming out of that. Special education population continues growing. In twenty-one, twenty-two, more than three hundred and thirteen thousand or eighteen point one percent of public school students receive special, special education programs and services. This represents a sixteen point one percent increase over the last thirteen years, while overall public school enrollments were down six percent. So enrollment's down, but special education needs have grown. The most commonly reported challenges this year have been student mental health needs and staffing shortages, which we already said. One of the surveys responded said our biggest challenge is figuring out how to use grant funding that will not last, knowing that there will be a cliff in just a couple of years. So I think that's something really important, especially we're coming into budget, you know, we're talking about budgeting and, you know, people read and hear about all the grant funding that has gone out, but there are limits to that and how long that that will be available to us. Charter costs are primary budget pressure for the fourth consecutive year, so we already said that. Budget pressures force tough choices. When asked to select the actions their school districts would be taking due to budget pressures, raising property taxes and drawing from fund balance were selected most frequently. So if we don't get enough money from the state, that's what, you know, has to happen. For a majority of school districts, especially those suburban areas, the largest share of their revenue comes from local sources. So it's local taxes. From a national perspective, only seven other states receive a lower proportion of public education funding from state revenues than Pennsylvania. So our state is not, has not.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, I will. I'd be happy to say that again. From a national perspective, only seven other states receive a lower proportion of public education funding from state revenues than Pennsylvania. Those states are, if you care to know, Ohio, Florida, Connecticut, Texas, South Dakota, Nebraska, and New Hampshire. Most districts have spent or obligated federal relief funding. So school districts have until September 30th, 2024, to spend all of the pandemic relief funds they received under the American Rescue Plan. For most districts, these funds have already been spent and or obligated for the future. Pensions push state spending higher nationally. Pennsylvania ranks 10th nationally in terms of current expenditures per student, with $17,142 being spent. However, 5,656, or 33% of that spending, is dedicated to employee benefits, including pension costs. Only one other state has a greater proportion of spending per student dedicated to employee benefits. School districts are controlling expenses. The growth in mandated expenses, particularly pension costs and charter school tuition payments over the last decade, has drastically outpaced the growth in all areas of school spending. School districts have responded by outsourcing more educational and other services as a means of limiting mandatory pension costs. The impact of pension costs, charter school tuition, and special education on local taxpayers and students becomes clearer when comparing the state revenues intended to help cover those expenses with the actual increase in those mandated costs. Spending on those three mandates, pension, charter school tuition, special education alone, exceeded state and federal revenues by nearly $3.7 billion. So that's, you know, the good news. Another thing that, you know, I thought was good to put out for public consumption, under current law, a school district's charter tuition rates are based on the school district's expenses. As school districts' mandated expenses have continued to increase, so have tuition rates. As a result, school districts' charter tuition payments have kept increasing even while charter school enrollment growth slowed. Public schools have experienced a 63.9% increase in special education costs over the last 11 years. State and federal funding for special education has only increased 5.3% during that time. And one last, last morsel. As state and federal funding for special education have failed to keep up with the pace pace of growth in expenses, the share of special education covered by, let me just read that, covered by state and federal funding have decreased as well. For most school districts, the difference is made up entirely by local funding. So again, while, you know, this information is put out and shared with, you know, board members and administrators, you know, I don't know how many people in the public get to hear a lot of these statistics and and things that are, this isn't just, you know, unique to Carleton, it's kind of across the board, and it's important information to share. So that's what I'm sharing for PSBA report tonight.
If Chris doesn't mind, this is a bar graph that shows the school districts controlling expenses. That big bar at the top is pensions.
Now, that's, you know, it's starting to level out a little bit. It's not as steep an increase, but it's still, yeah, it's a it's a big, it's a big deal. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Good, good information. Questions?
Thank you.
My quick takeaway is that there are a lot of challenges facing public education. I think a lot of the things that our staff and administration is sharing with us, we see reflected in that report, that other districts are seeing the same thing. At the same time, I want to thank Dr. Kreider and Keith for navigating us through all of that, both educationally and financially. I think we have a incredible district, and we're in great shape from a number of aspects. We still have challenges, and we're still facing all of that stuff, but.
Well, and I think if anybody comes to our finance committee meetings and gets the opportunity to hear the the thought and work that's put into, you know, navigating these challenges and making a budget that works for our district, I mean, we we do have, you know, tremendous talent here in our district that helps us get through this.
Right. And I think maybe one small example is the student that showed up earlier, and teacher, one of many teachers, but we have a great staff that inspires that kind of reaction from our kids, so. So it's a somewhat depressing report, but it's good to know what we're all facing, and we're doing pretty well, so. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll move on. Under Section 4 of our agenda under miscellaneous, I entertain a motion to approve the following items. Number 1, the additions to the list of conferences to the 2022-23 school year. Number 2, the Allegheny Intermediate Unit's policies and procedures under 34 CRF 300.101 through 300.624. And number 3, the attached Pennsylvania School Boards Association Principles for Governance and Leadership. Number 4, a $15,000 grant, which we're accepting from the Women for a Healthy Environment, to conduct testing and remediation for potential radon. Any any motion for that set of items?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved to second, thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. Under Section 5 Finance, we have six items. Can I entertain a motion to approve? Number 1, the bills from January 15th through February 17th, 2023, in the amount of $902,999.38. Number 2, to approve the following reports as reflected in our February 2023 financial reports packet, the January Treasuries Report, Investment Report, Board Summary Report, Athletic Fund Report, and Junior/Senior High School Activities Fund Report. Number 3, the proposal from Holly Consulting Group to complete a post-retirement medical evaluation, JSB 75, for the 22-23 and 23-24 school years at a cost of $5,800. This rate reflects an increase of $200 in previous years. Number 4, the Learning Beyond Borders Afghan Refugee School Impact Support to Schools Grant from the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Number 5, the attached change orders, number 4, 5, and 6, in regard to the Craft and Window Project. And finally, number 6, the attached request from the South Central Area Schools, sorry, South Central Area Special Schools Jointure Committee for Pathfinder School for additional funding continued upon the approval of all other members of the jointure. Do I have any questions? First of all, do I have a motion for those six items under?
That's so fine.
Second.
Moved to second, thank you. Any questions or comments? And just, George, to clarify, the item you had mentioned earlier in your report is reflected here in item number 6, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Section 6 Personnel, we have a total of four items. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Number 1, having Christine Foley provided a temporary position of Class 1 Secretary at Carnegie Elementary School, retroactive to February 13th, 2023, until a vacant position is filled. Number 2, the request for leave of absence for employee number CFT 2223-09. Number 3, the attached MOU between the district and Act 93. Number 4, the employment of Pezer's Annuity John McAdoo as an emergency administrative substitute per the attached agreement. Do I have a motion for those four items under Section 6?
So moved. Second.
Moved to second, thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Under Section 7, we have two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Number 1, the additions to the list of field trips for the 22-23 school year. And number 2, to authorize the administration to sell, donate, or recycle old banding uniforms that are no longer being utilized by our marching band. I have a motion for those two items.
So moved.
Second. Moved to second, thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Any policies? Nope. Old business, any director have any old business they'd like to bring up? How about new business? Any director have any new business? No. Open form, anybody in the audience have open form questions? I do have some people that have signed up to speak. Tammy?
Yes, I've never done this before. Do I speak to my chair or the podium?
If you're comfortable standing up, that'd be great. And just to confirm for the record, your name and.
Sure.
Or your community?
My name is Tammy Poplar. I live in Crafton. I've been in Crafton for 13 years. I have two children that go to Crafton Elementary, a fourth grader and a first grader, and I'm here with Amy Rinn, she's my child, my son's first grade teacher, and she's been with the school district for 24 years. And so we're here today to ask the board to help ensure the safety of our children by keeping students out of Crafton Elementary on public election days. So for those of you who don't know, Crafton Elementary is used as a voting location for local residents. The school board has done a good job of closing the school to students on the November election date, so for example, this past year it was used as student-teacher conference day. However, there's also an election date in May that the school is not closed for. And so as a result, we have voters coming into the heart of the school building when students are on site. On a normal day when school's in session, the only non-faculty adults that are allowed in the building have to have all security clearances pre-submitted, which I think is fantastic, this had to be approved. However, on this specific election day in May, any adult is allowed inside without bedding. There's a low-grade security guard outside to help with directions, but this guard does not follow voters in. Once inside, the voters have full access to the school with our children inside, and Mrs. Rinn has agreed to share some of her firsthand experiences with these voters while on school premises.
Okay. Hi. I'm Amy Rinn. As she said, I've been with the district for a really long time. I hated to even tell you that. And prior to that, I was a student at Carleton Elementary, graduated in 1993, and I've been around for a really long time. So last year, and if you don't mind, Dr. Kreider, I just printed the email that I sent you last year, after voting, just several days later, I think, was when that Uvalde school shooting happened. Sorry if I.
No, sure.
So I emailed just on behalf of our students, because the situation there was a little chaotic on that particular day, so just going to read this to you. Okay, so, good morning, this was addressed to Dr. Kreider. This has been on my mind, since last Tuesday, the Lincoln yesterday shooting, I would like to express my concerns about using our elementary school as polling place on election day. On that day, the public had access to the classroom next door to mine, so I am in the front of the school. My classroom and Mrs. Urco's classroom right next door are the only handicap-accessible entrances. So I was displaced two years ago to another location in the school so that they could use my classroom. She was displaced this past year. So voters entered from the front of the building, walking past my classroom to get there. This may not seem concerning, as my front door is locked from the outside. However, once voters were inside the classroom, they had access to our school building. So our doors obviously don't lock from the inside, and people are able to get out into the hallway and then have full access to our school building. At one point, a woman exited that classroom, opened my door, and popped her head in to ask if I knew where the restroom was while I was teaching students. And it could have been any person, I mean, it happened to be some nice woman, but you never know. If there was a security guard there that day, I never saw that person. Initially, my students are dismissed through that same front door. At that time, there were still voters, obviously, coming in and out of the building because it was 3 o'clock, and, you know, they were there until, I guess, 8:00. So as I was dismissing my six and seven-year-old children, a woman approached me with biblical literature and pro-life pamphlets, asking me if I was interested in reading, you know, what she had to say there. There were some parents out front who not so nicely asked the woman to kind of leave us alone as this was happening, but, you know, the pathway was not clearly marked. A lot of people, and most of them elderly, did not know where to go. So I'm trying to, you know, shuffle 20 kids out the door while these people are trying to enter my door. Is this where we vote? Is this where we go? No, it's not. Where do you go? You know, they didn't know, and that's fine, but just for the safety of these kids, I had emailed asking, is there any way we can move this this polling place? And I know from talking with Dr. Kreider and several other people in the district, apparently we've asked, it's not up to us. So we've approached Allegheny County several times, they apparently are not willing to move the polling location. You know, I offered to contact them, I think it's been done, and to no avail. So when Tammy asked if I would come speak, sure, you know, I I love those kids, and for their safety, you know, I think the parents are asking, is there some other solution to this? Can we have a remote day for the kids in Crafton that day? Can we change the calendar? I know it can't be done for this year, but in the future, to something like an service day, we are happy to be there. I'm not so much worried about me on a on a day like that, but to have 300 children there is a little concerning. So, thank you.
I worked on this a few years ago. Tell the people at the Election Bureau, the phone number is 412-350.
Congratulations, Penny.
Okay. I'll go on to say, the precedent is.
Oh, thank you.
That Carnegie Elementary School used to be a home.
Yes.
We fought it.
Yes.
They went up to the library, it's perfect for us.
Right.
That's the precedent. The head of the Election Bureau is was very adamant that he wanted this to be a learning experience for the kids, for people to come into your classroom and ask where the restroom is, apparently. But his voice sounded old, so maybe by now. So call and call and call and call.
Call that number.
Okay, 412-350-4500. If they don't answer that number, call 412-350-4525. The precedent is Carnegie Elementary is.
Yes.
Our situation in Carnegie, and there is space in, where's your?
There's so many polling locations in Crafton, we do not have that many people. I mean, it would be said right at the bottom of the hill. I live on Bradford. I live closer to the elementary schools than I do to my actual polling location. I could roll down the hill to get to the other voting location. I mean, it's ludicrous. There are like 45 in Crafton, you don't have that many people.
We had Mayor Perry and Councilman Oliverio in to talk to the kids. We were learning about citizenship and social studies, and we had mentioned it to them, too, you know, like, why can't anybody do anything? But it just.
Representative Deezie might be able to help, so we could reach out to Dan if he can help or something.
That's a good point. That's the only, that's the only resource we didn't reach out to, because I know we, I personally spoke to the person, sent emails.
George.
Got the same same kind of responses, and shared the same identical information of other locations, and also shared the number of people that vote in that location. It's not excessive.
But perhaps it's time to put something in writing that uses current events as an example, like, do you want to be behind? We don't have that. We don't, you know, it's a suburban school, so do you really want to be behind in a community where there's five other voting locations, really pushing to use a school?
Yeah. Hey, Tony, what if we just said, no, don't bring those in here? The machines.
What would happen? It's like, how are they really going to? I am not an expert on the election code, but we can look at it, because this is learning experience for me. It's sounding like the county, why would the county have, unless the state has given the county authority? That's like my thought process under the code. I would have to look at the code to see if the state gave the county the authority to mandate a polling place on a school, and especially listen to this in this day and age, when we know that we're being trying to be more careful about who's coming into schools. It just doesn't make sense to.
Gymnasium, right?
Where the authority comes.
We do have the handicap entrances. But, right. And I had even mentioned that to Marcia when I talked to her, we have an empty computer, what was our computer lab. However, it's not handicap accessible, and no matter where it is in the school, we have no way to gate off a section, we can't lock hallways or, you know, so if they came in that way, they have access to an upstairs stairwell, as well as, you know, the first floor.
But it sounds like you brought up some good points about even if we have your signage, like, in the middle. edge, like in the meantime.
We write the letters and we tell them we no longer want.
Let more security.
I never sent my kids those days.
Why, I think a lot of people.
I just don't know if anyone has the legal authority for this. That's what I'm, I would really love to know, what is the legal authority from the county agency unless it's given to them by the state? That's the answer I want to find out, so give me a minute.
My question as a parent to the board is, I understand it's an uphill battle to get this change, and I appreciate any support that you guys can offer, but it seems like you, as the board, have the immediate ability to say, yes, we have these virtual days built into our schedule. We've had zero two-hour delays and zero virtual days so far with our lack of winter. This is coming up in three months. If we make this decision now, we can give parents plenty of time to know on this particular date in May, their kids are going to be home, these days are built in. As a board, can you do that for our students and say, we appreciate and acknowledge the concerns, it's just not worth the risk in this day and age where you turn on the news and there's just devastation? I mean, how many days this past week were there shootings? It's just, to me, it's scary, and it's scary, I, as a parent of Crafton Elementary students, I actually didn't know for several years that this has been going on in May, where adults can just enter the building and just say, hey, I'm a voter, and they just get shoot on in, and it's scary. So to me, as a parent, it's not worth the risk sending those kids to school. I think it's great that you've built in virtual days. Let's just use them, why not? And it's, it's not something that the whole school district has to be impacted by, it's just Crafton Elementary, and Marcia Brolson is a hundred percent supportive of making this a virtual day. And I'm sure within our administration, through our school district and the PTA's support, that it could be easily done. So that's really more what I'm here for today as this temporary band-aid on it, but from, you know, Mrs. Rinn's perspective of she lives in this situation every single year, it would be a great, you know, great to have your support with uphill battle. But me, as a parent, I'm just looking for the band-aid to protect my children.
Maybe I didn't stress enough. When I spoke with them several times, it seems to be one person in that office decided here to suffer. So I would say just keep calling and get, ask for other people, or ask your Allegheny County Councilperson to do something about it, because they're in the same building.
But that's a perfect thing.
Part of the solution. I agree with that. I think we can probably also acknowledge, and I'm not going to speak for everybody officially, but I imagine that most of us are probably acknowledging that what we have heard happened in the past, we don't want to have happen in the future. Is that fair? So whether it's a virtual day or whether it's an extreme other accommodation that prevents the kind of things that you described from happening this year from happening again, we probably can all agree on that. Long term, we have other things that we can do, whether it's a legal approach or whether it's representative. Long term, we can fix this different way. Short term, we can acknowledge that what you experienced in the past should not happen again. So at least in the short term, is it something that you and the team can go look at, acknowledging? And is anybody disagreeing?
No.
Okay. So can we figure out a fix for this year, knowing that the building might be open, or if it is open, what precautions will we take that would minimize or eliminate any of what they've seen?
Yeah, so two pieces, like Amy had mentioned, we used to do it down in the art area, and there they had access to the building. One thing we looked at was using your classroom because it has an exterior door to it, and what that does, it allows people to come in just through that exterior door only. The issue is it has an interior door that is then open to the rest of the schoolhouse. So our plan's moving into this year, in the past, we've got one security guard who was stationed just out front to help direct traffic, to get them to the right place so they weren't trying to get in other areas of the building. So we thought going into this year was to get two security guards, one to be out front to direct the traffic into that door, and then a second one just to stand at that interior door so that nobody can enter the building without going through the security guard, which would be that extra layer of protection there. And then in addition to that, was to put additional signage.
But we had an issue with the security guard in the past, too.
Well, we had, yeah, right, we had one, and he was there. But his main piece was being out front directing traffic into that door as opposed to standing at that door.
Before you came, we had, we never shared.
John, before you came at Carnegie Elementary School, the last time we had an election there, a primary or whatever, there was a voter on the second floor walking around. And one of the years, I think it was the final year at Carnegie Elementary School, the security men never showed up, and so the custodians had to act, the security people.
I remember hearing that.
Yes.
But I know that Mrs. Byerly takes care of securing the security for that, and the past, since I've been here, they've shown up consistently, but our plan was to get two individuals, one to protect the interior door and then one out front, and then also just getting additional signage. The second piece you mentioned there is using a FID day, the Flexible Instruction Day, to have students go and vote on that particular day. The potential issue with that is the FID days, as far as from the state, the way that they govern those, they give five or six different reasons on why you can use a FID. Epidemic, pandemic, severe weather.
Outage, like utility outage?
Yep, utility outage. One piece in there, from what I recall, that we may be able to put an argument in for would be for severe safety issues. And I think that their intent might be a little bit different than what we're sharing, but what I could do, and if, and I'll look.
I'd rather play fast and loose with the intent. What are they gonna do about it? Come after us and tell us that we have to open our school buildings to joke you follow? I mean, really, do you want to be on the news with that?
Take away some funding, maybe?
If it's just Crafton, would you even need to use a FID day? Because we would get credit for being in school if the other two buildings are here.
Well, and there, the other piece to it is, we'd have to check our hours, the nine hundred ninety hours and the number of instructors, the one eighty instructional days. We book a hundred eighty-one. If we take one off, we're at one eighty, we still meet the state code. We'd have to check our instructional hours, nine hundred ninety hours. This year, we haven't had any two-hour delays, we haven't had any closures. Our hours are generally a little bit over a thousand. So I think we would have the space to still meet the state guidelines for instructional hours and instructional days.
Could it be a teacher's contract issue if we do it in one building and not the others?
What's that?
Could it be a teacher's contract issue if we do it in one building and not the others?
No, it's not. The only, and I don't, it's not really a contractual issue, it's if we would, if we would ever close the high school, we would have to close the two elementaries just based on food service because all the food is made here. But if we would have an issue in one of the elementaries, we can close one, leave the other two buildings open without any, and no contractual issues there either.
I think we should explore in depth the idea of adding a remote day.
And so what I'm thinking there is, so even if we, I can, I can put the request into the state to use it, even if they say no, I think we're still good. We'll double-check the numbers, because we wouldn't have to report it as a school day, but we would require it as a school day.
What if a toilet broke? Things happen, toilets break, they have to flow, they get water on the floor.
Do you have a friend?
Everything in Crafton is old. Building's old, our house is old, everything's old, things happen.
No offense to John and my fellow board members, but fight Grand Street. That's the only permanent way to do it.
Yeah, our principal has, the PTA has, other parents have, and it just hasn't gone anywhere.
You need a picketer, give me a call.
Dr. Kreider, just, you know, I appreciate your comment about adding the second security guard, just, you know, there are plot holes with that, somebody takes a break, you know, they are entitled to, and sure, they get a thirty-minute lunch break at some point throughout their shift, so then not gonna have somebody covering those doors.
Three, how about three? Three quarters?
Ten smoke breaks. I mean, it adds up, so it's just, it's just a not situation. So I would appreciate the avenue that we take to just get the kids out of the building, whatever that might be.
Yeah, and I think the petition letters, what I did is I gave a sample to the PTA of just a, basically it was a sample letter that I wrote that I think the PTA took and duplicated to use that, so, yeah, we tried.
One quick question. My personal impression of FID days are that we learned during the pandemic that they're not nearly as effective as, nothing is nearly as effective as having the kids in the school room seeing you and your colleagues. Do you anticipate there's any approaches that we can take that would comfort that concern enough, that would tip the balance and say, okay, well, that's enough of an accommodation that I now feel comfortable in? Yeah, I would rather have my child in the classroom with his or her peers learning, or is the fear so great or concern so great that no accommodation would potentially work? And I don't know if you can answer it tonight, but just in my mind, that's the question, like, can we accommodate this reasonably without having to push the kids home and probably negatively impact their learning?
My, no, it's the only area in that facility where you can't get in without a badge is that main little vestibule, right where the secretary buzzes you in. Once you're through those doors, you can get anywhere in that school, and those guards that we have are not gonna be armed.
Which we wouldn't want anyway.
Yeah, and, you know, you just hope that the people that enter that building aren't carrying some sort of weapon, don't have any mal-intent. You hope that they're Crafton residents that are just going there to vote, but if the wrong person found out that, hey, I'm a voter, but I'm really not a voter, and they can get into that building, you never know what could happen. So from a parent perspective, if there's nowhere in that building that you can physically secure them, not let them anywhere else in the building, they shouldn't be allowed in. In this day and age, it's just, it's just the reality that we're dealt with.
And those FID days can be live. We can have live interaction with students, even if they're not in the building, which I think we found actually to be delightful at times during pandemics.
And planning, I mean, this isn't like, you know, we're getting snow, because we're not getting wind ever again.
It's a day.
Right, it's a day that we know is two months from now, so we have time to plan it.
No, but I think George just pointed, like, maximum pressure, and from, from every angle, whether it's through a state representative, through a county councilperson, or a local politician who you talked to the other day, through us, you know?
To picket each street. Get their attention.
Well, I think the other component is, if the board does decide that we move towards a flexible instructional day, I think that can be another argument that we pose to them is that the election is having a significant impact on our children because we had to, we had to close up and keep our kids at home on that particular day, and it's not something that our community wants. Restructuring our professional development days, we're limited with the number. We like to put the final professional development day there in March, and it's strategically located for a specific purpose. Yeah.
So let us work, let, maybe Tony, his team can provide us with some ammunition which can help change their opinion, and we have some time, but the comments have definitely been heard, the opinion has been heard, the concern is noted, and we will figure out.
How does the board typically follow up on such sort of situations?
We've never had a situation like this before.
Generally, I think in the broad scope, if somebody brings an issue to us, requires the board to reflect or the superintendent to reflect on the issue, generally somebody gets back to that person, whether it's in writing or whether it's a personal phone call, just to give you an idea of where we are in the process. So that would be something I would extend to, either a phone call or an email. Phone call is probably the easiest.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Appreciate your time and your presentation, thank you.
Any other open forum comments, questions? Any board member have any open forum comments?
Oh, you guys, come on. I mean, I can, my daughter's ninth grade, back when she was in Crafton Elementary, she knew about school shootings, and she refused to go to school those, that primary. And I totally agree, I never sent her.
And did you write a note that was properly excused?
Yes, obviously.
I always did. Oh, well, the one year Sarah turned in no excuses, and I had the truancy officer, and I opened her backpack and we fixed it.
Any other board comments?
I just want to say something. I thoroughly enjoyed having Jackson here and Mr. Alzner. And I wish we could get back to, we used to do this a long time ago, that at the beginning of every meeting, we would have the kids come in. So, you know, even as a board member, parent of an athlete, I don't know everything that our amazing kids are doing in this district. So because we videotape these meetings, and a lot of the public does tune into that, I'd like to see us share more of that. So when the swim team wins a section title, or somebody does something in Parkway.
The boys did.
And I know that because you and I are friends on Facebook.
Yes.
If I wasn't friends with you on Facebook, I wouldn't know that. So if we could get to doing some more of those things, again, it doesn't take a bunch of time, but I think what it would also do for those kids.
Well, it also promotes the good things that happen. I agree, Kelly. Thanks for your suggestion. Any other comments, suggestions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay?